Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Be 33, 35.
Thanks. In the comments, don't see them. Commenters. So just go right ahead to the main part of the agenda, special education plans. Yes, I'm asking Renee to speak.
On summary, Renee. Talked about, do you know what we talked about last time?
Not exactly. So you're, I mean, I think it's a funding question, right? Like how the SU.
No, I want to ask about the three children. Is it three or four? Three, so three.
So there's three children that moved in.
We have an open session at Cat TV here, so.
Yeah, I'm not mentioning names.
So there's a number of children that moved into North Bennington that resulted in special education costs, and they were wondering how the money flows. And I threw, they were basically asking, how does the money flow from into special programs? If a child attend, if any children attend any sort of specialized program, how is the billing done? And I tried to explain around codes. So like if a child from Arlington went to a school in MAU HS and required a service that costs money, the Arlington code would be used to pay for that service because he's an Arlington student attending a different site. And I was trying to liken it to that, to say, this is my understanding of how it's done. But then Ray had questions about grants and how the state aid works out through, works through this special education cost. Does that help?
So, okay, so let me say this, like, I guess if we get into specifics, we're going to have to pass for executive session, but right now you can just talk to the general system, particularly for students with higher needs than normal in her mindset.
So.
And possibly served outside districts.
Okay, so.
Because if I remember the last meeting, like Ray, you had said that, and I had said this too, the special-led funding comes to the SU from the state.
Right.
And then it gets dispersed, or how does it get used?
So it gets assessed for what? So all of, all of the costs are maintained at the SU level for special education, along with the revenue that comes in from the state is maintained at the SU level, as you know. But folks at home might not understand that the SU itself is not a taxing entity. So the only way that it gets money to operate is by assessments. So the, the member districts and the supervisory are assessed on numerous things, special education being one of them. So what we do during every budget season is we, we work closely with Kate to identify the students receiving special education services. And we identify what district they reside in and are either attending schools or, you know. So the costs are directly calculated by district based on the students at our, you know, that point in time. We factor those costs in with the offsetting revenue that comes in from the state, which is changing. This year, based on Act 173, is now a census-based grant as opposed to several other grants that were funded previously. So when we were budgeting for FY '23, we received a worksheet essentially, or an estimator file from the Agency of Education as to what they anticipated our cut of the census block grant would be. And then I took that based on the, what the Act 173 is based on is going to be three years of average ADM. So they're calling that long-term ADM. And I broke that out by district so I could allocate that chunk of money that's coming in. What is going on with the camera? Probably making people sick at home.
Doing that on the phone?
Oh, yes. Whenever he speaks, the camera flies.
It's supposed to be smart technology, but not being very smart right now.
There you go.
Now, so the, we allocated out that chunk of money coming into to offset the expenses that we have on the expenditure budget. And then along with that, whatever fund balance was remaining from the previous year. So the net of all of that is what ends up in the local budgets. So that's essentially how the districts end up funding the money to the SU to pay for that. So it's really the net is what the local districts see. On the extraordinary side, we do similar. At the time we budget, we try to estimate what those costs are going to be. And we have to report them, various reports that get sent to the agency at various times throughout the year. But very early on in the school year, we have to give them our plan. And we were estimating, and the threshold changes every year for what qualifies as extraordinary. And actually, I haven't even looked. This year, I think we were.
Make people seasick.
I'm not looking at, I'm looking at.
It's like a, like a screensaver, like it's just pinging back and forward. So again, we, but we take a closer look at the individual students and the services they're receiving. We try to estimate if they are going out of district. You know, if we can get an idea of cost from the school that they're going to, we'll factor that in along with any other associated costs for services that they're receiving at the out-of-district placement. So we have the, the base grant will be, you know, offsetting that base cost. But then anything over that threshold gets reimbursed at a higher rate. So we run that calculation to kind of bundle up that all in. For North Bennington, I don't think we've had any students in that category. But certainly in the bigger districts, we have, you know, some residential placements and some day placements. And then even, you know, some of our programs that we offer in-house end up in that extraordinary threshold too, just because of the, the level of service that they're, that they're receiving and the costs. So it's a system that. So that's how we prepare for it at the beginning. And then, you know, once it's all said and done at the end of the year and the audits are done, that's when we actually can factor in what the actual costs were with the actual amounts that were paid. And that's our fund balance to be used in the following year. So usually we hope it's, you know, in the positive, which it, you know, has been. So it just kind of, it's the process that keeps rolling on and on.
So.
So it's really for, for, for North Bennington for this year? We had some staff within the SVU ESD schools that we knew were servicing students that were attending SVU ESD schools that we allocated to a North Bennington cost code. So that's when, you know, Kate's talking about those codes. We kind of think about them as, you know, buckets or silos, however you want to visualize it. Be something that, you know, I can have somebody with five different codes. So if, you know, if they're serving in Arlington and they're serving North Bennington, they're serving SVU ESD and Mount Anthony, we can allocate them out for the proportion of students that they're serving. So when we budgeted for this year, we did have that. We kind of throw a ballpark number in for what we think the contract is going to be with the village school. And that's the, the cost that we, we throw in and then you have that offsetting fund balance and that offsetting census block grant. And the net is what goes into the North Bennington graded school district budget for the SUS for this.
Okay. Well, that's generic and I understand all that pretty well. I guess if I, you, you have not studied any of these particularities. So I can't really ask you questions about that because you won't know without doing some research.
And I typically know nothing about students. I don't see names, ID numbers. It's like I basically get information from student services as to just costs. And that's what we work with.
Right, so. If I want an answer about costs of particular students that are in our district, I would need for you to do one.
I would have to coordinate with Kate to identify. And we have to make sure that we've identified the services that the students are receiving. If they're all staff and if they've been allocated currently. If there's a contracted service component, if they're in a specialized program that's, that's being served by an outside provider. We just have to make sure that that's allocated. And I wouldn't know that unless, you know, we get the information from Kate. And then, of course, you know, if it, those programs, we do have to allocate out by the number of students being served as well. So that's how we break down the proportions.
I kind of anticipate that you have had a discussion with Kate and we could actually talk about this. But we didn't have an executive session put on here, but I think it's okay for us to have one. But I'm not sure that it's going to be useful at this point. Because, because what I wanted to know was, was the cost of some students that have needs that are of the higher categories, close to threshold.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't say that you're necessarily going to have. It, we really don't know until the end of the year how everything kind of falls into place as to whether or not what we had budgeted between the staffing, the estimate that we had for the village school contract. You know, and we have a contingency factor in there too, because typically the, the dollar figure that we've had in the village school costs hasn't used up all of that. There'd be some breakage there. And again, if, we don't know if, you know, students are going to stay there all year either, right? So it's really, we're just kind of riding it out now. And that's the end of the year comes, we'll really be able to dial in on those actual costs. But to some degree, we're going to have to plan for it now for next year. If we anticipate the students continuing and we'll certainly look at that, you know, when we're budgeting.
So we kind of have, we have the estimated cost for this year. The students remain in their programs and if the students remain in their residences and for the budget process.
Are these individuals? So.
Okay.
The threshold is, um.
It's just moving in and out.
I haven't seen the, this year report that. Actually, I submitted to know what's on that, that tablet.
One, because our estimator, I think last, they, they didn't know where it was actually going to land. 63, 65, 70.
63 this year.
65 this year. It was 65 last year.
And our estimator for this year, she had it set at 60. So again, this was a year ago when this came out. So there was a lot of discussion about Act 173 that happened after this.
Apologize for making anybody seasick with the camera.
So based, I mean, if it's, if it's 60, you might have a little bit of extraordinary reimbursement coming in. But if it's 65, it doesn't look like the calculations are going to throw any of those costs in.
That would be a bad number. Or is it 90% above that?
Was 90, I think it's 95 now, but of course, they've upped the threshold, so.
That's good. Right, so. Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking for an estimate of what, what impact it's on your current budget. That's what matters, but obviously it'll have to be a discussion. You know, you'll have to work on an estimate of impact for next two when you're doing.
So do we have, do we have a contract from the village school at that line?
So I had your, I had from Mr. Newbold, the cost expected for the village school. And that was from, they focus at home.
Because the, those are super sensitive, the speakers pick up.
So, and this was how I estimated it. So I got the fiscal year, the one that you provided me was fiscal year 21, 22 and 3%. Thinking 22, 23, but should I be adding 6%? Or to increase the inflation? So I basically took Tim's calculations from, that he's provided and added on to the, with inflation with a 3%. How's Tino? So. Goal is 280,000, um. 09205 times, here's the thing, I don't know what inflation index is. If this was 21, 22, would you say that by, to calculate for 24, that we should do 6%?
I'm actually just asking about this year. I mean, I.
So, so what you gave me this year, Tim, it's, it was last year's numbers, so are the costs flat?
No, I, when you asked me to budget this year, I gave you what our expected costs were for this year.
So it says fiscal year 21, 22, so that's fiscal year 22. So, yeah, then the cost for fiscal year 22 for this school year is 280, 092.
That's, that's our, that's our first round estimate from the, the start of the year. We've had some changes in needs, but it's going to be around that, yeah.
I think we had over $400,000 in the budget, so. I mean, I know, I know the assessment was only $700 million because of how the census played out with the census grant. We just got the staffing changes, so I better run all those numbers to, to see where we are.
Staffing changes for the SU.
Right, so then, yeah.
Well, it doesn't sound like I can get an estimate of additional cost without allowing you more time to work on it and get more information, so.
It's coming from so many different.
Yes, no, I don't think we're going to sort it out today. So what I hope for is not going to happen, but at least the board here is, is Matt still there? Who else is still here?
If his camera's off, he's not going to show up.
Um, would you explain to me, you referenced Act 173? Did you, Renee?
Yes, that is, that is the legislation that was passed a couple of years ago that changes the way special education is funded. So it is now going to be based on. They want to basically give you a fixed dollar amount with an inflation factor every year, regardless of whether or not a student is receiving special education services. So they're, they're going to give you a dollar amount based on your average membership of your school district that averaged over three years. So for, for North Bennington, I think it's been around 160, 170s with the ADM, the average daily membership has been. So that number gets multiplied by the, the base number, which again, will have an inflation factor, I believe, every year. And it is two.
So it's by district, not by student?
It is by SU. But then, so for, for my.
For Renee's.
Yeah, so on, on the, the census block grant estimator that, that came from the agency for this fiscal year, he, being Brad James, gave us our, our long-term membership or our three-year average membership for the SVSU was just over 3,500. So that times the census block gives us, you know, seven, over $7 million that then I went back to the, you know.
Distributorial. Right, so it's, it's, since the SU's taken the money, it's based on SU three-year average. And then what that establishes a starting point. And every year after that, there's an inflation factor, is that right?
He does have a NIPA column in here, so the, although at a recent meeting last Friday, he reread the legislation and he said he didn't see it in there for subsequent years. It was in there from when they wrote the legislation to when it went into effect.
Well, yeah, now that clearly is not going to work if it's, if that's the way to it.
Probably, I would expect, make an adjustment to make sure that that is occurring. But knowing that they're, you know, trying to change the way that it's clearly the way that it's funded and the way that, you know, services are provided and it'll definitely force the hand, right?
Yeah, and I do believe that districts were making noises about, or SUs were making noises about the fact that you're going to have that factor for increase. I imagine that's what was intended by district, perhaps. To, so to make a little adjustment. Do we have a next step from this?
I mean, we can, we can try to give you best guesses, assuming like, I guess it would be a worst-case scenario, right? If, if the students, if everybody were to remain where they are today for the remainder of the year.
That'd be helpful.
We could, we could, we could do that.
Yeah, I think that would be useful. I, I, I'm actually thinking that maybe it's, because you've got budget season coming up here.
Oh.
You're already in it, up to your eyeballs. I'm, I'm thinking that maybe we could have some of this information by the time we, as a district, start making budget. We can get filled in, maybe you'll have time.
Well, no, actually, that, that actually makes good sense though, right? Because when we're looking at budget, if we have a point where we can show you, this is where we are now this year, we're thinking it's probably going to be the same.
I'm just saying that gives you all time, because you, you kind of need the SU budget to get put to bed. And given that difficulties of getting meetings scheduled here lately, like, you, you need to focus on that. I do understand that. So I think January would be a good time for us to hear some more information, because you will know more at that point.
Right, and I, I need the, the data to come in from the agency. So, you know, we don't have any of this, you know, the estimator files or anything from Brad yet, because he's, you said on Friday, he's still trying to reconcile FY '22 special education funding. So here we are trying to get our, our audits done for '22 and we still don't even have our settle-up from the agency for special education for '22 yet. So.
Yep.
And Brad's retiring. He's retiring.
He's retiring?
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, it's very scary.
What are they going, I don't know what they're going to do there.
Because he's, there's a lot of institutional knowledge.
Yeah, a lot of it's in his head.
And these crazy spreadsheets that nobody really, really knows how to work.
Yeah, I've seen those. All right, well, I, unless there's a comment from anybody else on the board at the moment, or Tim or Lori. I don't, is Matt still on here?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, he's, he's okay. Matt, Kieran.
I'm not sure if I.
I guess I was wondering, Ray and Renee. There was briefly a mention in the last meeting sort of about this, I'm going to make this word up to describe what I think I was hearing. It's sort of a buy-in option to, or an insurance for some of the special education programs? Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's an old term that applied to a situation back 10 years ago, I think.
Right, I understand that, but is that still, is still a current option? Renee?
Yeah, she doesn't know what you're referring to particularly. I think that was a conversation about on point, but.
Is that true, Renee? There's not, what Ray's saying is right?
It, we've, there've been previous administrators that handled things differently. So I think it was structured differently and the program was different. And now, again, Kate has, you know, the, the focus of keeping kids in their home schools. So we're not visioning that as a place anymore, but rather kind of a temporary, you know. So it really is, if it's a, something that is going to serve the needs of one of our students, and clearly we're, we're doing what we need to for our kids without constraints as to whether or not. I mean, right now, I can tell you that the only district that funded on point from the past, for the past several years was the, what was then the Bennington School District, panel, Woodford and Shaftesbury. It's just the way that it, it had been structured. But again, now that the costs are at the SU level, the SU has grown, we have that ability. And, and essentially what my plan is this year is to dismantle that program in its entirety. And it's, we're really going to have those, the staff and costs allocated out to the elementary district. And by doing that, it's going to allow more fluidity that if we did have a student from Arlington or a student from North Bennington use those services, all we have to do is just shift the funding. And it's not fully isolated and funded by one district. So it's going to be, sure.
Well, it sounds like an interesting project to look forward to here.
Alice isn't happy. Alex, Alex isn't happy.
Any other questions? Um, then I think we can just close this meeting. Thank you, Kate and Renee. Helped me a little bit because I, I was not sure of the details of how they were, uh, administering it from your point of view. And you'd be the person I'd need to know it.
Yeah, we, there's no direction, right? It's just, I mean, that was my philosophy. It makes, makes the most sense that if I can tie it back to numbers, actual numbers that are used for everything else, that's what we were going to do it. But of course, you know, there are other entities in the state that are single district.
Right.
So they don't have to...
All that's complicated.
Right.
Um, right, I just have one more question. So Renee, first of all, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it very much. And, um, another question that I have regarding special education, um, what do we do in North Bennington when we have a child that is deemed unsafe? What are our options for special ed in that regard?
Well, unsafe...
And I realize, Renee, that...
I'm like, I can't speak to that because that's out of...
Yeah, I know you can't, Renee. No, no, I understand that. This is more a question for Jim or Kate.
Um, a student that is unsafe is not going to necessarily be a special education student, uh, exclusively, so.
Okay.
Um, but you do have, um, I mean, you do have, you, North Bennington can avail itself to Student Support Services, uh, as Kate, you know, reported at our last meeting, so.
Yep.
A few... No, I mean, she sent that directly last meeting about on point.
In the immediacy, I mean, if a, if a child is unsafe in a school, we have, uh, our community partner, which is UCS, has family emergency services that can be called to any school or any family's home, um, to help make the situation safe in that moment and then do some assessment for next steps of care. So they might recommend that the child go to, you know, see a doctor or a psychiatrist to figure out what's causing some of their difficulty. So in the broader sense of like what to do when there's a child that's unsafe, those are the steps that most schools take.
Thank you for that more detailed answer. I appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else with a question? And I'm going to say, you know, we're adjourned. Unless we need to go through a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Kim, say. Okay. All in favor? That's all of us.
Good evening.